Good morning and welcome. Thank you for joining us today. Today is Monday, December 11, 2023, and we are here in the conference room for the Laramie County Commissioners on the second floor at the Laramie County Administrative Services Building. We welcome you all. We're here for a work session on our wildfire inspection fees with several folks. I'll introduce them in a moment. I welcome you. I'm Laramie County Commissioner Jody Shabey, now the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm joined at the conference table by my colleagues, Laramie County Commissioner Kristen Stevens and Laramie County Commissioner John K. Falls. Also joining us today is our County Manager, Lorraine DeVulker. We have Eric Freed from our Building Department. I'm sorry, it's Monday. I'll have to have all your titles. We have Justin Whitesell from our Emergency Services and Derek Rosenquist also from our Emergency Services. So I'm going to turn this over to Justin and let you get started. And thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Lorraine. So as you may or may not be aware, the Sheriff's Office does the wildfire inspections for Laramie County for the permitting process but also the assessments, which we've talked about, and I'll get into that a little bit further down the road. But since 1999, the Sheriff's Office, well, it was the Planning Department back in 1999. 2005, the Sheriff's Office, the wildfire inspection moved from the Planning Department to the Sheriff's Office with that position. And we collected the fee for those inspections. And for those permitting inspections, it's always been, it was $50, it raised up to $75. In 2016, the fee went back down to $50. I'm coming today to propose that we are more in alignment with the fire districts around Laramie County when it comes to the other fees, but also the other fire departments don't do the home ignition zone assessments for permitting. The Sheriff's Office is the only one that does those for the permitting part in the wildland urban interface. And so you can see on my list, do you have it? If not, I have one, a sheet in front of me that has it. I sent it, but I'll hand these over.
My colleagues would like a hard copy. I have it in front of me from the work session things we were sent.
Eric, do you have it?
I have it here.
Okay, perfect. But as you can see, and then attached to it as well as the current fee schedule for Laramie County when it comes to Planning Department. So those are all the fees attached there. So right now for that first review, the preliminary plaits, final plaits, things like that, and Eric can speak a lot better about those kind of items than I can. But right now, the Sheriff's Office does not collect a fee where you see the fire departments collect anywhere from $100 to $250. The review for the CTR sketch or any other project referred, again, the Sheriff's Office typically does not collect any money, and the fire departments collect anywhere from $50 to $100 for those fees. The home ignition zone inspections, again, we are the only ones that do them that I'm aware of. And then we collect $50 as of now. And then short-term rental, we do not collect a fee for that either. And then the home ignition zone assessments, so those are the voluntary assessments where the homeowner can ask for us to come in and do them. We don't charge for that. There is an asterisk there, and that asterisk is unless they want something, a certificate that they can give their insurance company, then we do charge a fee. I think it's $50 for that certificate to give to their insurance company, but we don't charge for the actual assessment.
I have a quick question about that. When you talk about insurance companies, because I know lots of folks, especially West of Loveland, have seen their insurance rates increase almost $1,000 for the year, just in one year, and others are struggling to keep insurance. Is this just for the home ignition zone around the property, or is it the whole property? And do you have any indications that the insurance will either let them keep insurance or lower their rates if they have this kind of document?
Yeah, Derek's a little bit more up on all that, so I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, so we have done a few of these, and it's a requirement of the insurance company. When we do that, we look at not only the fuels in the home ignition zone, but we also look at the house and provide the recommendations for the house. And whenever we have done that, the person has either been able to get insurance or maintain their insurance. I have not heard any feedback if it lowered it. I don't know that we have run into that yet. But as far as getting or maintaining insurance, we have had success with that.
That's helpful. I didn't know you guys gave that letter. So you're asking to maybe charge for that letter, to correct that letter, or is it still kind of a free?
No, the letter would be $50 for that. The biggest thing is I'm trying to be more in alignment with the fees, the reviews of the plaits and the final plaits, those kind of things. So as you can see in the bold line at the very bottom of that chart, my proposed for 2024, and I know decisions can't be made here, but I was hoping we could have a discussion of how this would possibly look. So my proposal would be to raise our fees to be more in line with the fire departments for those reviews to $100 or the conceptual technical review to $50, and then the home ignition zones from $50 to $150. And some of that, $150 to $150, a lot of the reason for that is obviously since 2016, costs for salary have gone up, gas has gone up substantially. Just the vehicle costs have gone up a good bit as well. And not that we're trying to recoup our costs for the time spent, but when Raina or Derek goes out, they're spending anywhere from three to six hours doing an assessment, and sometimes they have to go back twice. So that $150 would just help us recoup a little bit more of those expenses that we're pushing out. And again, we're not trying to recoup all of it because that would be a lot of money that folks would be having to pay for that permit. And then we don't collect anything for the short-term rental, but the short-term rental inspections are very similar to the home ignition zone inspections. And they're spending roughly about the same amount of time doing those short-term rentals. So we're just looking to try and recoup some of those costs again.
I have a quick question on that. I know Estes Park Fire does a pretty extensive short-term rental inspection. It's pretty, it's different than what we get in land use applications. Do you, and I don't see them on the list, do you know if they charge for that?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but standard practice for fire protection districts that I'm aware of, if they go to do an inspection, there is a fee involved with that.
Especially since they're all volunteer, and the other ones you have listed are the ones that are paid. Is that, would that be a fair assessment from what I see on the list?
And in Estes, the person who does the inspections is a full-time paid staff member.
Thank you. Sorry, just curious about that.
No, and those are all great questions. I want to say that Raina told me that they get $100 per short-term rental inspection, but that may not be exactly right. I'm not exactly sure, but I do know that they collect a fee. I just don't know what that fee is for those short-term rental inspections.
Thank you.
And then I don't know, because I think they go through the PFA leveling. Those costs are part of our fee schedule on our permitting, and I don't know how it separates out with Estes and Laramie County. Eric, do you know anything about that?
Eric Freed, County Building Official. That's more on the planning side, and there's no one here from planning. I think, I don't know that they were aware of it. I brought it up to them today, but if it's not listed in the planning fee schedule, they don't collect it. So at this point, Estes is not collecting a fee through the normal process of either building or planning. But my understanding is Estes Fire was telling people themselves that, oh, you're going to need a fire permit for your short-term rental as well. Here's our fee. Here's our application form. And so they just collected it directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So yeah, so I just really brought this to you in the hopes that we could talk about it and see how we move forward. If you had any questions, any concerns with my proposed for 2024? I don't know. That was really all I had.
Lorraine, I see your hand is raised.
I do have one quick question. So I see that the amount of time spent on an assessment versus an inspection is the same, and you're proposing no fee for the assessment unless they seek a certificate, but $150 for the inspection. Is that, is that to encourage people to go through the assessment? What's the reason that that's zero?
Yeah, so the inspections are required by the permitting process through the county. And you're exactly right. The whole idea is that some of these homes that have never been looked at, that have been tucked into the woods and have never thought about mitigation or really thought about it, is trying to get them to come into alignment with our home ignition zone and encourage them to do it by offering it to them for no cost is kind of the incentive there?
Got it. That makes sense. Thank you.
Commissioner K. Falls, I see you are indicating you have a question.
Yes, I have a few questions. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Regarding the proposed fee increase from $100 to $150 for, and the same for the zero to 50 regarding the conceptual technical review and the sketch plans and all that, what percentage of cost recovery are you hoping to achieve? Because you indicated earlier, Justin, that you don't, going from $100 to $150, increasing it by $50 wouldn't recover all of the costs of doing the inspections. So what is the percentage of cost recovery? Because I know we've had those discussions. Commissioner K. Falls, I see you are indicating you have a question.
Yes, I have a few questions. Thank you for joining us today. Today is Monday, December 11, 2023, and we are here in the conference room for the Laramie County Commissioners on the second floor at the Laramie County Administrative Services Building. We welcome you all. We're here for a work session on our wildfire inspection fees with several folks. I'll introduce them in a moment. I welcome you. I'm Laramie County Commissioner Jody Shabey, now the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm joined at the conference table by my colleagues, Laramie County Commissioner Kristen Stevens and Laramie County Commissioner John K. Falls. Also joining us today is our County Manager, Lorraine DeVulker. We have Eric Freed from our Building Department. I'm sorry, it's Monday. I'll have to have all your titles. We have Justin Whitesell from our Emergency Services and Derek Rosenquist also from our Emergency Services. So I'm going to turn this over to Justin and let you get started. And thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Lorraine. So as you may or may not be aware, the Sheriff's Office does the wildfire inspections for Laramie County for the permitting process but also the assessments, which we've talked about, and I'll get into that a little bit further down the road. But since 1999, the Sheriff's Office, well, it was the Planning Department back in 1999. 2005, the Sheriff's Office, the wildfire inspection moved from the Planning Department to the Sheriff's Office with that position, and we collected the fee for those inspections. And for those permitting inspections, it's always been, it was $50, it raised up to $75. In 2016, the fee went back down to $50. I'm coming today to propose that we are more in alignment with the fire districts around Laramie County when it comes to the other fees, but also the other fire departments don't do the home ignition zone assessments for permitting. The Sheriff's Office is the only one that does those for the permitting part in the wildland urban interface. And so you can see on my list, do you have it? If not, I have one, a sheet in front of me that has it. I sent it, but I'll hand these over.
My colleagues would like a hard copy. I have it in front of me from the work session things we were sent.
Eric, do you have it?
I have it here.
Okay, perfect. But as you can see, and then attached to it as well as the current fee schedule for Laramie County when it comes to Planning Department. So those are all the fees attached there. So right now, for that first review, the preliminary plaits, final plaits, things like that, and Eric can speak a lot better about those kind of items than I can. But right now, the Sheriff's Office does not collect a fee where you see the fire departments collect anywhere from $100 to $250. The review for the CTR sketch or any other project referred, again, the Sheriff's Office typically does not collect any money, and the fire departments collect anywhere from $50 to $100 for those fees. The home ignition zone inspections, again, we are the only ones that do them that I'm aware of. And then we collect $50 as of now. And then short-term rental, we do not collect a fee for that either. And then the home ignition zone assessments, so those are the voluntary assessments where the homeowner can ask for us to come in and do them. We don't charge for that. There is an asterisk there, and that asterisk is unless they want something, a certificate that they can give their insurance company, then we do charge a fee. I think it's $50 for that certificate to give to their insurance company, but we don't charge for the actual assessment.
I have a quick question about that. When you talk about insurance companies, because I know lots of folks, especially West of Loveland, have seen their insurance rates increase almost $1,000 for the year, just in one year, and others are struggling to keep insurance. Is this just for the home ignition zone around the property, or is it the whole property? And do you, have you have any indications that the insurance will either let them keep insurance or lower their rates if they have this kind of document?
Yeah, Derek's a little bit more up on all that, so I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, so we have done a few of these, and it's a requirement of the insurance company. When we do that, we look at not only the fuels in the home ignition zone, but we also look at the house and provide the recommendations for the house. And whenever we have done that, the person has either been able to get insurance or maintain their insurance. I have not heard any feedback if it lowered it. I don't know that we have run into that yet. But as far as getting or maintaining insurance, we have had success with that.
That's helpful. I didn't know you guys gave that letter. So you're asking to maybe charge for that letter, to correct that letter, or is it still kind of a free?
No, the letter would be $50 for that. The biggest thing is I'm trying to be more in alignment with the fees, the reviews of the plaits and the final plaits, those kind of things. So as you can see in the bold line at the very bottom of that chart, my proposed for 2024, and I know decisions can't be made here, but I was hoping we could have a discussion of how this would possibly look. So my proposal would be to raise our fees to be more in line with the fire departments for those reviews to $100 or the conceptual technical review to $50, and then the home ignition zones from $50 to $150. And some of that, $150 to $150, a lot of the reason for that is obviously since 2016, costs for salary have gone up, gas has gone up substantially. Just the vehicle costs have gone up a good bit as well. And not that we're trying to recoup our costs for the time spent, but when Raina or Derek goes out, they're spending anywhere from three to six hours doing an assessment, and sometimes they have to go back twice. So that $150 would just help us recoup a little bit more of those expenses that we're pushing out. And again, we're not trying to recoup all of it because that would be a lot of money that folks would be having to pay for that permit. And then we don't collect anything for the short-term rental, but the short-term rental inspections are very similar to the home ignition zone inspections. And they're spending roughly about the same amount of time doing those short-term rentals. So we're just looking to try and recoup some of those costs again.
I have a quick question on that. I know Estes Park Fire does a pretty extensive short-term rental inspection. It's pretty, it's different than what we get in land use applications. Do you, and I don't see them on the list, do you know if they charge for that?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but standard practice for fire protection districts that I'm aware of, if they go to do an inspection, there is a fee involved with that.
Especially since they're all volunteer, and the other ones you have listed are the ones that are paid. Is that, would that be a fair assessment from what I see on the list?
And in Estes, the person who does the inspections is a full-time paid staff member.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, just curious about that.
No, and those are all great questions. I want to say that Raina told me that they get $100 per short-term rental inspection, but that may not be exactly right. I'm not exactly sure, but I do know that they collect a fee. I just don't know what that fee is for those short-term rental inspections.
Thank you.
And then I don't know, because I think they go through the PFA leveling. Those costs are part of our fee schedule on our permitting, and I don't know how it separates out with Estes and Laramie County. Eric, do you know anything about that?
Eric Freed, County Building Official. That's more on the planning side, and there's no one here from planning. I think, I don't know that they were aware of it. I brought it up to them today. But if it's not listed in the planning fee schedule, they don't collect it. So at this point, Estes is not collecting a fee through the normal process of either building or planning, but my understanding is Estes Fire was telling people themselves that, oh, you're going to need a fire permit for your short-term rental as well. Here's our fee. Here's our application form. And so they just collected it directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So yeah, so I just really brought this to you in the hopes that we could talk about it and see how we move forward. If you had any questions, any concerns with my proposed for 2024? I don't know. That was really all I had.
Lorraine, I see your hand is raised.
I do have one quick question. So I see that the amount of time spent on an assessment versus an inspection is the same, and you're proposing no fee for the assessment unless they seek a certificate, but $150 for the inspection. Is that, is that to encourage people to go through the assessment? What's the reason that that's zero?
Yeah, so the inspections are required by the permitting process through the county. And you're exactly right. The whole idea is that some of these homes that have never been looked at, that have been tucked into the woods and have never thought about mitigation or really thought about it, is trying to get them to come into alignment with our home ignition zone and encourage them to do it by offering it to them for no cost is kind of the incentive there?
Got it. That makes sense. Thank you.
Commissioner K. Falls, I see you are indicating you have a question.
Yes, I have a few questions. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Regarding the proposed fee increase from $100 to $150 for, and the same for the zero to 50 regarding the conceptual technical review and the sketch plans and all that, what percentage of cost recovery are you hoping to achieve? Because you indicated earlier, Justin, that you don't, going from $100 to $150, increasing it by $50 wouldn't recover all of the costs of doing the inspections. So what is the percentage of cost recovery? Because I know we've had those discussions.
costs are part of our fee schedule on our permitting, and I don't know how it separates out with Estes and Laramie County. Eric, do you know anything about that?
Eric Freed County Building Official, that's more on the planning side, and there's no one here from planning. We, I think, I don't know that they were aware of it, I brought it up to them today, but if it's not listed in the planning fee schedule, they don't collect it. So at this point, Estes is not collecting a fee through the normal process of either building or planning, but my understanding is Estes Fire was telling people themselves that, oh, you're going to need a fire permit for your short-term rental as well. Here's our fee, here's our application form. And so they just collected it directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So yeah, so I just really brought this to you to hope, in the hopes that we could talk about it and see how we move forward. If you had any questions, any concerns with my proposed for 2024, I don't know, that was really all I had.
Well, Lorraine, I see your hand is raised.
I do have one quick question. So I see that the amount of time spent on an assessment versus an inspection is the same, and you're proposing no fee for the assessment unless they seek a certificate, but a hundred and fifty for the inspection. Is that, is that to encourage people to go through the assessment? What's the reason that that's zero?
Yeah, so the inspections are required by the permitting process through the county, and you're exactly right. The whole idea is that some of these homes that have never been looked at, that have been tucked into the woods and have never thought about mitigation or really thought about it, is trying to get them to come into alignment with our home ignition zone and encourage them to do it by offering it to them for no cost is kind of the incentive there.
Got it. That makes sense, thank you.
Commissioner Kofalas, I see you are indicating you have a question.
Yes, I have a few questions. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you colleagues. Regarding the proposed fee increase from a hundred to a hundred and fifty for, and the same for the zero to fifty regarding the conceptual technical review and the sketch plans and all that, what percentage of cost recovery are you hoping to achieve? Because you indicated earlier, Justin, that you don't, going from a hundred to a hundred and fifty, increasing it by fifty dollars wouldn't recover all of the costs of doing the inspections. So what is the percentage of cost recovery? Because I know we've had those discussions with the engineering folks and the building permitting folks, I think.
No, and that's a great, great question. And really, we're just looking at recovering, not even the time necessarily, but you're probably right around in forty-five, fifty percent recovery of time, vehicles, all that kind of thing, the fuel. So not anything significant.
May I continue a little bit? Thanks. Related to, thank you, related to that, how many of these do we do annually, and what dollar amount are we looking at? I mean, we're going to recapture a few thousand dollars, or ten thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars?
No, another great question, and I guess first let me start off, and I'll let Derek answer how many we do, but the money that we do collect goes, so the sheriff's office has different budgets, obviously, so I have my emergency services budget, which is our operating budget, but we also have, and all these budgets, different pockets or buckets of money help me keep organized and know where my money's going and coming out of, so I do that just so I can have better organization. The money from these fees goes into what I call our IFAM, so our, I forget what they, it's basically for our initial attack module to go out and do mitigation work. So all the money that we get back in these fees goes back into mitigation, which we either spend on community mitigation projects, like the one up in Waltonia that we did earlier this year. That money went right back into the communities. If it's not going directly to a community, it's going to a grant to help pay for some of those grant costs that we have. So the money isn't coming back in an emergency services budget, it's going into the IFAM budget, which is my mitigation budget to do mitigation work around the county. So it's really going back into the communities, isn't going back into my pocket. So I'll let Derek speak to how many home ignition zone inspections and then the other ones that we do, because I'm not exactly sure on a total number. I think we've done eighty-three home ignition zone inspections as of November first.
Eighty-three?
Yeah. And then as far as the other ones, I don't, Derek, do you know?
Probably, as far as...
Can you turn your microphone?
Oh, my apologies. For general assessments, and I just pulled this up real quick, probably twenty home assessments, but then part of the program with the wildfire ambassadors, many more have been achieved through, with various fire departments that have partnered with us. It's taken a little bit to get that up and running, but Raina has...
As far as the ones with fees, though, how much are we, like as far as the minor subdivisions and plaits and all that, do we only see typically three to five?
Probably looking at one to two a month on those. So call it twelve to sixteen probably through the year.
I'll pause for a moment, maybe Commissioner Stevens asks questions, otherwise I have a couple more.
I have one, if I could build on top of that, if you wouldn't mind, Commissioner. Since we are having this ambassador program, which I'm thrilled about, and it's really been great to bring the community together, and some of those folks are doing some of those home ignition, home ignition inspections, or maybe assessments, assessments, thank you. Those are kind of done on volunteer basis, that's part of that program. Do you have any numbers of how many, I mean, this could really get us out into communities we haven't been able to have conversations with. So how, I think you've already seen that, do you have any numbers or ideas of, through those ambassadors, how many homes? I mean, I haven't, I know I've talked to a few, I'm thinking there's been a dozen, but maybe my numbers are off, because people have come up and said, oh, yeah, I had the ambassadors come by, and so I've just been kind of keeping that tally in my head, I'm just curious about that.
Raina has been keeping the tally of that, and unfortunately, she is sick today, but I can certainly, I've got access to that database, I can certainly look that up and forward it to you if you're interested.
Yeah.
And as far as I know, like, the last data we had was around twenty, and again, that was to November first, we've done twenty, and that was just Raina, that wasn't the ambassador program, because it hadn't really been up and running that long. I imagine you'll see that number grow significantly next year, but those are, again, the ones that we don't charge for, so we don't recoup anything unless we provide a certificate for those.
So if you, if you're waiting to pause till Commissioner, overall, the budget for having Derek and Raina, because Raina's kind of new this year, we kind of approved that position, really, how much does this program cost? I mean, this, the benefits of this are immeasurable if we get people doing this mitigation work and working together, the community, we can't measure that, but how much of, if you really had to charge what this inspection was worth, how much would that be?
If we had recoup our costs, you'd probably be close to a thousand dollars per inspection by the time, especially with the drive time. And like I said, sometimes they go back twice to the same site to review it. Some of these places are way back in there, in the middle of nowhere and hard to find, and then coordinating with the homeowners to make sure somebody's there to be onsite at the same time, takes a lot of coordination over the phone. So you're probably talking minimum of a thousand dollars per inspection.
So that's quite a bit of a gap.
Yeah, significant gap. And again, we're not trying to make money off of it, and I do want to put the money back into the communities. I don't, I'm not looking to pad my budget, and this is not by any means a money grab on my part, it's really trying to find money that we can put back into our budget to continue mitigation throughout the county. There are other programs that wanted to do something similar to Waltonia, as I've spoke to you all before, one of my biggest concerns in the county is ingress and egress out of some of these communities. One, to get people evacuated and out of harm's way, but two, to get our first responders in safely and make sure that they can get back out once they've gone in to evacuate people. And by opening up these roadways and reducing the pinch points and the areas where the flames could impact the road, that's really my focus for the next several years till we can do a good job of that. And that's one of the projects we did open Waltonia, and I know some other communities have reached out to Derek and Raina to try and figure out how we can do that, and this money will help us. Again, it won't, it doesn't cover the cost of doing the mitigation work, but it offsets, again, some of those costs that we are pushing towards the communities.
Thank you. Commissioner Kofalas?
So you're suggesting that, so we're talking about the home inspection zone, the inspections would go from fifty dollars to a hundred and fifty, and the home inspection zone assessments, which are voluntary, would go from fifty dollars to a hundred and fifty? Is that correct, sir?
So the home ignition zone inspections, you are correct, it would go from fifty to a hundred and fifty. The home ignition zone assessments, which are voluntary, would remain voluntary except for that first certificate, it would remain at fifty dollars just for us to give them a certificate for their assessment.
Thank you.
Oh, I did put down there at the very bottom, didn't I, from fifty to a hundred and fifty? So on the asterisk right above the other chart down at the very bottom, the gold level HIZ assessment, fifty-dollar certificate, which is what we've been charging, and then trying to recoup, again, some of our costs, because they're about the same amount of time, it would be a hundred and fifty dollars for that certificate, but the assessment's free, it's just that certificate would be a hundred and fifty dollars. You are correct. My apologies.
Thank you for, that's helpful, Justin. And maybe Commissioner Shattuck McNally was asking me about this, but, so you, somebody wants to provide that certificate to the insurance company to help with it, you know, homeowner's insurance, and they reach out to you all, you go do the assessment and do the checks, the check, check off the boxes. If the assessment determines that they're in good shape, then you issue the certificate. If the assessment determines that there's work that needs to be done in the defensible space, what happens after you do the assessment? And do they, if they pass, they get a certificate? If they don't pass, what happens after that?
Yeah, and I'll let Derek answer that, since he's the one that oversees that part of it.
Yeah. So essentially, what we'll do is treat it just like new construction, go up, if everything is good, great, they get the certificate right there. If they need work, we provide them a step-by-step instruction of what needs to be done, and then, once they get all of that completed, we would come back out, everything's good, the certificate is produced for the insurance company.
Then, thank you, Derek. And I, my last question then is, pending approval, what are your, when would this take effect, and what's the process for considering whether or not to approve this?
Yeah, and those are all great questions, and I guess I'm throwing back to Eric and the planning department a little bit of how we would implement the process for that. And obviously, coming before Admin Matters and asking for the fee increase, I would imagine that had to be an Admin Matters discussion item.
That's right. So we will put that on consent after this discussion, if you get good direction, like we do any of the other fees.
We might want to roll this in, excuse me, because Planning's already been up here to talk about updating their feat development review fee schedule, and have gotten your buy-in, and that was going to come on consent on the nineteenth through your work, Admin Matters meeting. We've already talked about building the vision, adding a hundred-dollar code compliance fee, which you guys had agreed as part of the code compliance assessment. So I was sending our revised fee schedule through, same, same date on the nineteenth, to add the, you know, the code compliance fee. If you were in support of this, I think we'd actually have to get it done by noon tomorrow, but we could revise the planning fee schedule to include the hundred, we could change the building permit fee schedule D right now, which is where it's fifty dollars for a wildfire assessment, to be one fifty for a wildfire assessment. So we could take care of that if you're in approval. As for the HIZ assessment, that's a separate process, I'm not really aware how you, what you'd need to do to approve the increased fee for the certificate for the home inspection zone assessment.
Typically, we've informed the public, maybe, I couldn't hear everything you were saying, because you're kind of soft-spoken this morning.
That's true.
But typically, we'll inform the public prior to implementing any fee changes. Is that what we're talking about here? And I get all the logic behind doing this. What I'm struggling with these days is that all these fees are going up, and they need to be going up, people are feeling hammered by, you know, property taxes, and so that's where I have a little bit of reservation, recognizing the importance of doing this. But how would we inform the public? Are we just going to surprise them that if they want to get this done, it's going to cost them three times as much?
Lorraine, would you like to tackle that?
I will. So I think what we could do is we do a media release through David Moore and the sheriff's office, as well as put it on as spotlight, and I'm sure you have your fees posted now and your services posted now on your website. We could, we could make sure we beef that up as well, so that it's, it's well seen by folks coming through this process. I don't know if that's sufficient, Commissioner, if you would like more time, more notice, or if that meets your needs.
So when would this, this potential increase take effect? I'm still not clear on that.
Well, the planning and building permit fee increases were supposed to take effect on January first, if we can actually get, you know, Anorgov reprogrammed that quickly, because the planning fees were already supposed to, the second round of planning fee adjustments were supposed to be January first. And then the building one, we were also thinking January first, but, you know, we can put those off if, if the board wants more time to notify the public, that's up to the elected officials.
Commissioner Stevens, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I think it's important to, you know, increase the fees, because there are costs associated with them, and it's important work. I like, you know, kind of that we've left the assessment, you know, not having a fee, so we can encourage people to do this work. You know, I think that they're certainly in line with some of the other things we're seeing around other departments, so I appreciate having the little spreadsheet that shows kind of what everyone is charging. I'd be curious, did you go outside the county at all to see what maybe other counties are charging?
I did not.
Okay. Might be something we do in the future, but I think it's important to look at these fees and, and, you know, I think it, you know, I think you struck a happy balance in between, you know, not charging what it would totally require to do some of this work, which would be a thousand dollars plus maybe, but having, you know, acknowledging the fact that, you know, we do have staff working on this, it does take staff time and hours, and that is, that is money out of the county, and so to have more work to do, additional mitigation dollars is important. So I would be supportive of seeing these, and I, you know, as long as we do some, some outreach about what, you know, what the fees will change to, I certainly think that, you know, doing it in the new year would be fine with me.
Commissioner Kofalas?
What's the question?
I just wanted to see if you wanted to respond to that, or you have something else to add, because then I'm going to add my, my two cents.
I think I'll just listen for the moment.
Okay, I'm going to take my cop drop out. I don't know why all of a sudden I have to tickle, it's all that dust from the air curtain burner last week, since I had to take a, well, I think you all talked, it sounded like you guys had to clean out your bathtubs after cleaning up, and I was just dusty, but. So I think, first off, I do agree that we need to make sure the public's informed that these are costs, that we will be trying to reinvest in the community, which is, to me, an urgent matter to get people to do these assessments and also to get this work done. Kind of alarmed at kind of the amount of money and the gap there is. I know you guys know this is important, but that's, we're not even close to recovering, so at least trying to pay, it sounds like we cover the gas for the, because some of these are really remote, and so I think let the public know this is not even close to covering the costs. But other people are going to say, well, that doesn't seem equitable to have that kind of deficit. I think since we are already doing kind of a shift in all the fees, it would probably be us to kind of have it all come together instead of having this as an outlier, because it looks like we're doing an increase again. So I think having it all together, but I think the messaging is really important, and I think also, maybe, as Commissioner Stevens, maybe for next time, just making sure as a region, we can always also share this. It looks like Loveland's, two hundred and fifty dollars, they say Loveland's charging way more than we are, so it would be, but, you know, those are all in the city, we have lots of miles to travel to do some of these. So I think I would support getting some information out and just rolling this in with the rest, so we can at least cover, and I appreciate you investing this back into mitigation, and, because I feel there's an urgent, urgent need to address this, what do biomass and mitigation crisis, I feel, on our landscapes, not only Laramie County, but in the region, and how we need to do that before the next, we need to do all that we can before the next natural disaster or wildfire. And as we always say, it's not if, but when, we all say that, but it is. And I would, I think this is a modest increase, and I think the assessments, especially if they're being done by those ambassadors, that's really a valuable program. So would love to make sure that program, if we're going for grants, or if that's through wildfire ready, or whatever that's from, I'd like to make sure we support that, because I think that's also building community connections and really building resilient communities, which aligns with what we're trying to do, is help people help themselves, and I think that's a key component. If we have everyone helping each other mitigate and educate, that's really important. So I think that's very valuable, and I don't think you could even capture the benefits from that and this cost, but that's invaluable. So I was surprised to hear a thousand dollars or plus, that's, but it makes sense, if you're driving back and forth multiple times and spending hours writing it, it adds up, and your time is very valuable. So I would, I would support this, and how we, I just want to make sure that we message it to make sure people understand, and that you're messaging it on your side and our side and going forward, and unfortunately, growth and doing these things costs money and time, and so it's important that we help people understand what goes into this. It's not just coming out and checking a box kind of procedure, there's a lot to it, so, and it's very technical, important, skilled, and educational piece to it, too. So that's where I'm at on that, and I appreciate you guys looking into that, but I certainly would like to know other, other regions, what they're doing. would like to know other, other regions, what they're doing, so. And, or other sheriff departments, because I know we're kind of unique, has that too many sheriff's department have emergency services doing this work? Is that correct? Am I correct on that?
I'm not really aware of any other sheriff's office that go out and do the inspections.
Yes.
So I would have to look at inspections from planning department and building department.
Yeah.
Because I think that's still housed under the county, not underneath the sheriff's office. And I, when, when the decision was made back in 2005 to move it, it just, we were the subject matter experts.
Yep.
And we worked really well with the planning and building department, so we saw it to be good alignment, not to be unique or different, it just fit in our wheelhouse a little bit better. And I think it still seems to be working really well, and has always gone really well with the collaboration with the county and the sheriff's office, so.
And I appreciate that partnership. I think it's invaluable, but I also think it helps you also get, you know, when it comes down to time of emergencies, you guys are getting out to see some of those landscapes firsthand, and that's, you know, really important. So that's all I have to say right now. Commissioner Stevens, anything else to add? Commissioner Kofalos?
So with reservations that I've expressed, I can come around to supporting this fee increase. Again, it's not to diminish the importance of this work. I would suggest that any outreach we do, spotlight or whatnot, that we, once again, explain the purpose of a fee, that it's administrative, it's cost recovery, and then how will those additional dollars be used? And it may not make sense in a spotlight article, but I think folks need to be reminded there's general purpose taxes, general fund, and then there are fees that are attempting to recover the cost of doing the work. So I believe that that would be important in a spotlight article or as part of our outreach. Maybe we're doing that with all the other fees that we've considered, so, because I think people get confused.
If I could add one thing, besides the spotlight and the excellent work that comes from our PIOs on the sheriffs and the commissioner's side, I've been sending out a quarterly newsletter to all contractors with some educational information, and one should go out early January, so we could certainly put the, the fees in there as well, the code compliance fee and the wildfire fees that we're increasing.
With some degree of explanation about
Yeah.
And the contractors, I suspect know that, but I think something like this, it probably doesn't hurt to remind us all.
That, and with the other efforts we talked about, we could do that. So I'm hearing support for this, so I think what we can do is roll this into the, you know, the planning fee schedule revision, that's supposed to come to you anyway, I can roll it into the building permit fee revision. The 150 for short-term rentals, is that on the planning side or on building permit application?
It'll be on the planning side.
Okay. Right, okay. So I think we can revise that in the next 20 hours, and have it still come to you on the 19th?
You actually have until noon on Thursday, so you're
Oh, well internally, Kristen says noon on Tuesday, and we don't want to mess with Kristen.
That's right, yeah, we don't want to get on Kristen's bad side.
No, and I, the, making sure we push that out, I'll get with our PIO from the sheriff's office and work with Michelle Burden, her folks here at the county, to make sure that we get that out, along with what Eric had proposed as well. I got to go to the sheriff's office here next, and I'll work with Kate on that as soon as I leave here. And I do understand your reservations about increasing fees, and this isn't something I take lightly. You know, it's something I've thought about, and I actually met with the sheriff and had those discussions with the sheriff and the leadership of the sheriff's office, and something we thought about before I came here to the work session. So I agree that these times are hard for everybody, and when we increase fees, it's not something we take lightly. We don't, the sheriff's office doesn't have many fees, and this is probably one of the things, maybe a handful that we do have fees for, so.
I wonder if this is an opportunity to, to really talk about that free assessment, because it really is for the benefit of the homeowner and all of us if there is an event. And the idea that we have these certificates available that we could issue, it might be a really good piece to draw some interest to that service, because that is a free service, unless they want a, a letter.
No, and that's a great and very valuable point, be great exposure for that program. And even, and it's not, and that assessment, the home ignition zone inspections are just in what we deem the wildland urban interface areas, the, the assessments can take place in anywhere in Larimer County, especially after Marshall Fire, so I think that's another
That's great.
... point that we can bring up and make people aware of that.
So, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm just
Of course.
So that's a good point, but I want to make sure we don't provide confusion. So if they're inside the city, would you be doing the assessment, or the fire department? That might be more fees, and I'm just, I want to make sure we don't have that confusion about.
So we would say in unincorporated areas, is that right?
Yeah, and we work with the, like, PFA and Loveland, we're working with them. I think Loveland does the inspections, the assessments, sorry, the assessments within city limits and a little bit outside. PFA does the assessments in the municipality, we do them outside, but I will make sure to, say, unincorporated Larimer County, to make sure that we're clear. And Kate and Michelle do a great job of making sure that we are getting the message out correctly. That's obviously not my forte.
Commissioner Kofalos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one final thought, perhaps a recommendation. Regarding the, the homeowner's insurance certificates, I wonder if we're tracking how many of those are being issued, and then whether or not are we able to track whether they're having an impact, you know, statewide in terms of insurance coverage, because we know that California's having a heck of a time, maybe someday that'll happen in Colorado. But what is the impact of those insurance certificates in terms of potentially lowering the cost of homeowner's insurance, because they're doing the right thing? And it, we may need more data, more time, but ultimately, is it affecting, you know, what happens statewide with, you know, that's part of cost for people who own their homes, right? It's, it's property taxes, but it's also how much they pay for insurance, and a lot of that, if you're in the wooie, wildland urban interface is driven by, you know, the risk assessments. Can you speak to that, Justin?
Yeah, no.
Tracking that and whether we should or could?
And that's a great point, and I think to
Thank you.
This day, and I, I guess let me start by saying this, we haven't faced the same insurance problems that the, the rest of the country's seen in California and maybe Washington quite yet. Is it coming? We don't know. The biggest thing is we're trying to be proactive and get ahead of it, and we're trying to have a program in place, ready to go in case that day does come. And so while we haven't seen a huge push here, we have done, what, two or three of those insurance inspections, and that's all we've done in the last couple of years, and that was, I think, after the Marshall Fire, or maybe Cameron Peak. Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, we, I've done two of them pre-Marshall, two of them post-Marshall, and those were all with the homeowner reaching out, saying, hey, my insurance company is requiring this.
No, and I, Commissioner Kofalos, you bring up a great point, and as we get more of those, I do want to keep those statistics, because I do think it's important, and also part of Raina's position is to work with the insurance companies ahead of time to figure out what we can do to get them the information they need and be more aligned and be more collaborative, rather than them just saying, hey, we're not going to provide insurance. So we're really trying to be proactive with our approach to the insurance companies and the homeowners, to make sure that we can do whatever we can to make the potential for them to get insurance increased. So we'll continue to work down that road, but I think it's important for us to know what the positives and negatives are from those assessments that we do, and if we need to do something different to help out the insurance companies. So that's something we'll continually be looking at, because obviously, you know, that's changing constantly. So it's really up to Derek and Raina and I to stay ahead of that whole process and make sure we're helping out the homeowners the best we can.
So I have another quick question, maybe not a quick question. You know, this is happening in Boulder County, kind of this work, and, you know, there's a subcommittee now between the Forest Health Council and the Fire Commission, and we're talking about some of these things. And the insurance has come up, especially even for HOAs or for some of the, in non-government, homeowners association and the non-government organizations. I know Commissioner likes it when we don't use acronyms, so. So they are also having trouble getting insurance for certain things, for projects and things. Have you talked to the Fair Commission or the chief, is it Chief Moore? No, Chief, trying to remember, about some of the data they have and some of the landscape or the thoughts of across the whole state about any other things that are happening similar to this, or the efforts trying to help all of Colorado, especially our region being, we're at, knowing that Larimer County is designated as a high risk, what other areas are doing that maybe overall, we're all working on this together, it kind of helps lower our risk overall, maybe help bring, keep prices hopefully, but at least keep some people able to get insurance. I'm just curious if you've had any talks with the state in that, that work there?
Yes, I have. I'm assuming you're talking about Director Morgan, Division of Fire Prevention and Control.
And I think Chief Moore is from the US Forest Service, I'm getting my Morgans and Moores, sorry.
Oh, there's a lot of people in the world, so. No, I have had those conversations, I'm aware of the, the Fire Commission and their workings and what they're looking at. I continually interact with those folks to see kind of where they're heading, because a lot of it drives what we do, or if we can get behind. The, I'm on the Emergency Firefighter Fund, which is the old Wildland Fire Fund for the state and the counties, and a lot of the discussion is where the Fire Commission is going and looking at insurance and those kind of things, because that's that money that the sheriff's office pays in every year, but then we have a million dollars that we can use on wildland fires. So that EFF or Emergency Firefighter Fund has a lot of those discussions, so, nope, I think that's a great point, making sure we're tied in with those folks, looking at it at the state level rather than just at a local level, and making sure we're in alignment or at least trying to help each other out, rather than doing everything independently. But those are something that I'm working with the Division of Fire Prevention and Control all the time to see where we can help them out.
That's great, and I don't mind us, you know, collaborating, but also, we, we also need to do what I call the Larimer Way and be innovative and do what we need to do for, meeting the needs of our county, but I think just keeping those silo walls, silo walls and barriers down and make sure we're communicating and just, and we, like you said, we're like, whether a few, the sheriff's office has this in this, and we had this OEM, and I know after that, at the CCI conference hearing from other OEMs, they're really struggling to even know what policies to put in place. So I think that, you know, it just, whatever we can do, help others, because it, you know, fires don't know county lines and boundaries, and, you know, we found that out in 2020 with three fires coming into our county. So I, I'm just, you know, I'm always looking for how we can partner and learn and help others, and, because when we lift everyone up, it helps all of us. So I appreciate that you had those conversations, you're involved that way. We've been very fortunate the last almost two years, because you guys kept all those fires under 38, 50 acres?
300.
300 under 50 acres? 100 acres, which one?
Oh, that's, 300 acres is a large fire.
No, 50 under 300 acres.
Yeah, 52 fires.
And then last year, we were very fortunate, so it's, it's something that we need to be really preparing for, so I appreciate that. All right, I think, I think you have your, your direction.
Yeah, nope, sounds like it's supported. I'll work with Eric to make sure that I can help him get this done in a timely manner. I'll work with Kate and Michelle to make sure that that piece is out there, the spotlight, and then Eric and his newsletter, I'll make sure he has whatever information he needs for that newsletter to go out to the contractors, and I will go from there.
Great. And just for your, all your information, we're looking at the national, the federal, the Biden Commission on Fire mitigation work from one of the members of the commission on Friday morning, so if anyone, one of you want to jump in on that, that meeting at Zoom, if you want to listen in.
Perfect.
Let me know, I'll get you that, that link, so.
No, that's great.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thanks for everybody's time.
All right. Well, that, at 11:46, we are adjourned. Have a great afternoon, happy Monday.